We'll order the seventh regular scheduled meeting of Lynn City Council. Metaphor call.
Council Biden.
Present.
President. Council Cahill.
Present.
President. Council Capano.
Present.
President. Council Chakutis.
Present.
President. Council Calucci.
Present.
President. Council Creighton.
Present.
President. Council Seah.
Present.
President. Council Ford.
Present.
President. Council Lozey.
Present.
President. Council Annette.
Present.
President. Council Trahan.
Present.
President. Eleven present.
We all rise for a moment's silence, followed by the official.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Constitution of our citizens, on the basis of our Constitution under God, individual privilege, and justice for all.
You have a motion to accept the meeting minutes. I have a motion made in seconded, although the paper said I closed the mail that I sent and accepted it. Communications, we have no communications. We have no communications.
Public hearings. Petition of Academy of Sin, LLC, DBA, Lynn CrossFit, Robin Fouts for permission for a CrossFit gym at 860 Western Avenue, Sunday through Saturday, 5:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing. Close those wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing. Counselor Capano.
Yes, I led the owner and he's put a significant amount of investment into the building. It's a new kind of business and I think it fits in the area good, it looks good. He's also, it's not on the agenda here, but we've done a lot of promoting of great restaurants downtown. He's done a little players restaurant and it's now called Bruno's Burgers and I had a burger there today that was really good. Did a good job in the restaurant there. You know, everyone should try it out. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to grant this.
A motion has been made to grant in seconded discussion. Roll call.
Council Biden.
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakutis.
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Seah.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Annette.
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, eleven yes. Next petition, petition is seat mistro, Christina Morel for permission for a wine and malt license at an existing restaurant at 159 Central Avenue.
Open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone wishing to speak in favor can come to the podium and just state your first and last name and your address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Christina Morel and my address is 47 Golden Estrella, Parkland, Nevada. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jared Nicholson, 13 North Idaho Street, and I'm just here to help with translation. Francis Martinez from the North Shore Latino Business Association, unfortunately can't be either tonight, so I'm just here on her behalf and on behalf of the North Shore Latino Business Association and who are a strong in support of this petition.
Thank you. You can say a few words, you don't have to if you don't like it, you just be standing in support. Okay, process.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor. I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor and open the public hearing for those in opposition. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one in opposition. I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing. Counselor Chakutis.
Motion to approve.
Seconded. Motion has been made to approve in seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Council Biden.
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakutis.
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Seah.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Annette.
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, eleven yes. Next petition, petition is School of Rock, William Galatas, for permission for a sign permit at 25 Exchange Street.
I'm going to open the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor. Galatas, if you could come to the microphone, state your first and last name and address for the record.
Bill Galatas, 18 Cold Spring Road, Bill Recker.
And feel free to say anything about the petition and why you're standing in support.
Well, School of Rock is the owner of the school in Lynn and also in Water Town and it's a great program and we're really happy to be able to bring it to Lynn and we want to, we want to be a big part of the arts and the cultural district here and we want to put up some beautiful flags on our building and get rolling.
Fantastic. If you just would want us to sit in the front row there just in case you're going to make questions, anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Counselor.
Joseph Eastham of the third, 236 Parkland Avenue, like to speak in favor as president of Lynn Art and Lynn Museum with the landlord and we are very pleased to have this tenet of building. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to duly note that the former or counselor for Board One, also the council president, is speaking in favor. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor, I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in favor, open the public hearing for those in opposition. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing no one in opposition. I close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition, I close the public hearing. Counselor Chakutis.
Motion to approve.
That question has been made to approve in seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Council Biden.
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakutis.
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Seah.
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Annette.
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, eleven yes.
Thank you both.
Petition of Comcast, Timothy Brederick for permission to place from existing wall slash manhole on Silsby Street, one four inch PVC conduit, two hundred plus and minus feet in south easterly direction to the property of Paul Humpfurn Street.
I know, open the public hearing for those in favor, Mr. Brederick.
Timothy Brederick, Comcast, 55 Concord Street, one ready, favor the petition.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor? Anyone else in favor? Seeing no one in favor, I close the public hearing for those in favor, open in opposition, 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 seeing no one in opposition. Close the public hearing for those wishing to speak in opposition. Close the public hearing. Very popular tonight. Counselor Chakutis, you're up again.
Motion to approve.
Very. Motion has been made to approve with stipulations.
Stipulation, I checked with the DPW that they have to, if they cross the center line, they have to go curb to curb. If not, it's center line to the curb. And as we, we gave.
Okay, absolutely. Stipulation that they follow the current DPW rules as they pertain to opening roads, I close them. Any discussion on that? Counselor Trahan, thank you.
I have a question, so can we, are you going to cross the center road? You just kind of stay.
I hope not to.
Stay.
Yes, well, I think safety now would turn around, what's in the way and where we can, we're on transport, we'll try to stay.
We'll stay.
Yeah, we can try to stay so that we don't have to move the curb to curb. Absolutely.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Council Biden.
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakutis.
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Seah. Absent, Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Annette.
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, ten yes.
Public hearings be set down, if there's no objection, we would like to take them all at once and just do.
No objections. So yeah, sorry.
Correct.
We have the two petitions that were tabled at the March tenth meeting and I don't know if it's agenda, maybe brought up again tonight.
Mr. Robin, I believe that's an account of an unfinished business, so you might want to stick with the party and. Thank you. Any objection to reading the public hearings altogether? Counsel Chaku, uh, school counsel, Calucci said do it, we'll second it. Metaphor.
Petition of BEP Corporation, DBA, Little Season Pizza for permission for a restaurant in the business district of 58 Market Square. Petition of BEP Pizza Corporation, DBA, Little Season Pizza for permission for a sign permit at 58 Market Square. Petition to Demetrius, Demetrius Stephanitis, owner and purchase and sale for permission to convert a legal two-family dwelling currently used as a funeral pile with two apartments to a three-family dwelling. Petition to Comcast, Timothy Brederick for permission to place one four inch PVC conduit from existing wall manhole on Andrew Street, thirty feet plus and minus in the westley direction to property of one Andrew Street. Petition to Comcast, Timothy Brederick for permission to intercept existing conduit on Silsby Street and place a new manhole from the new manhole, place one four inch PVC conduit at thirty-five feet plus or minus in southwestly direction to the property of two seventy Union Street. Petition National Grid, Rafael Pena for permission to install twenty-five feet plus and minus of one to three concrete encased conduit from existing pole P eleven-two property of twenty-five Gordon Road to provide best service to the customer. Petition National Grid, Rafael Pena for permission to install solely owned and line pole fifty-one dash fifty between pole fifty-one and pole fifty-three Allen Street to install sidewalk fixture anchor at pole fifty-one slash fifty and at pole fifty-two and pole fifty-one fifty shall be located approximately fifty-six feet plus or minus from pole fifty-three further to install approximately a hundred forty-seven feet plus or minus of two to four inch concrete encased conduits from existing rise pole fifty-two Alley Street towards Commercial Street up to customers property at one seventy-five to one eighty-nine Alley Street. Petition to National Grid, Rafael Pena for permission to install seven feet plus and minus of one to three inch conduit from pole twenty foot of the property at five fifty-five Western Avenue. And petition to Ridgedale Convenience Store, Manzera Lawn for permission to transfer package to a bearing line license from two Market Square to five seventy-three Chestnut.
So what's the wish of the council? Mr. President, now it has been seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, open the papers, say aye.
Aye.
Close no, yes, savage. The public hearings are a future date. Unfinished business.
I believe there are two matters, Council Chukis, that are currently tabled relative to Verizon repairs and what's the wish of?
I'd like to have them on the table.
Okay, we made, I made both matters off the table. I can't on debate, open motion made seconded, roll call.
Council Biden.
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakutis.
Yes.
Yes, Council Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Seah.
No.
No, Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Annette.
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, ten yes.
And court.
We have two petitions. First is a grant of location petition, I'm not going to read the whole thing, I'll just give you the shorter version, to place a new underground conduit to provide service at two State Street. Do you have a public hearing?
I have a public hearing, so what's the wish of Counsel Chukis?
Same stipulation, I'll motion to approve, but if they cross the line, they have to do curb to curb and would like to be notified if they have to cross, go over the center line, like to be notified if they do so we can know if they have repaved correctly.
A motion has been made with said stipulations. Seconded. Any discuss, seconded, any discussion? Counselor Trahan.
I have a quick question, Timothy, now, you think you're going to be crossing the road on these development, on these two lines?
Project, State Street. So on the State Street petition, we'll be coming up Washington, hopefully having one side, turning up the central and then turning down Andrew, hopefully staying on the side again, depending upon whether the dig save marks, what's in the way, will determine where our trench will be and then at that point I would imagine when we go over the DPW permit, they will tell us.
So I knew we were here last time and we had a problem with the project, because it crosses all the streets, so if the council approves it, even if she approves this and you end up having to go across the street in the cable, are we doing that?
So I guess, yeah, well, I guess the question would be, again, until we dig save it, we really won't know. I would imagine that at that point we're going to have to cross the street, especially down in the market street section, because even if we do hub all the way around and stay on one side from Washington Street all the way around, we're going to eventually cross the street for the market street side because we have to get to the other side to pick up State Street. So if we have to cross over in that section, which we will eventually, we will have to do that because we've got to get to the other side of the street. Are you asking us to pave curb to curb?
I, I, curb to curb.
Yeah, I want the, if you're crossing the center line, I want the street, it says, it's stipulated in the DPW rules that you have to pave the curb to curb.
But just that section, right?
Just that section, that area.
Section, not the full.
Twenty-foot area. You guys understand, I just want to make sure you understand.
Yeah, no, that's, I think last, the last meeting was, you know, running the trench a long way and then doing the curb, full length of the trench. If we're crossing it diagonally, then absolutely. Yeah.
Counselor Seah.
Thank you. Two questions, one is how wide is the trench?
We're hoping to do a twelve inch, but depending what's in the ground, it may, may be a twenty-four inch by.
Okay, it's a stipulation, it says, at least the way I'm going to stand, wherever they put in the trench, whichever side they put in the trench of the street, I think it'll be paved from the center line to the curb.
No, we have to cross the whole street.
No, no.
We're saying from the center.
Two different facts, you cross it over, the center of the street is going to be curb to curb.
In that section.
But the stipulation is that even if you didn't cross over the center of the line, a two-foot trench, you're willing to go from the center of the street to the curb to repaint because that's what the stipulation is.
Well, generally the, when we go to get the permit, there's a two-foot overlay of the trench.
Right.
So if we hurry, the car, if we hurry along the curb, then, you know, we'll take, we won't, there'll never be a gap between the trench and the curb, we'll go all the way to the curb on the side we're going and then two-foot over on the.
So we're talking two different things here, but the stipulation is that no matter where you put the trench, you have to go from the center of the street to the curb.
That's, you know, I mean.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's, that's what the stipulation is. So if we vote for this, the way it is right now, you would have to repave it, no matter which side of the street the trench is on, it's from the center of the street to the curb. That's what the stipulation is.
When you say stipulation, what are you referring to?
In our first approval, you have to agree to do that.
Petition hearing.
And that's what.
Well, it's a stipulation, that's not, it's a stipulation by the council.
Right.
So that's something that we have, that's just known.
See, the problem, you gotta understand, the problem that I had a lot of times on recent months was that you can now, if you put a trench in the street, it's always a problem, but then a couple of years after that trench is put in, it's a bit, because, you know, and everybody says we're going to come back every six inches like we're supposed to, we're going to use solid fill, we're going to use this, we're going to do that, but it compromises the street and then we're responsible to come back a few years later to fix what either Comcast does, Verizon does, National Grid or whoever it is, and that's why we're trying to get you to understand what we're talking about.
I totally understand, but we would adhere to the specifications of the DPW.
Okay, not what the council is putting as a stipulation. That's what you're saying.
Well, that's what we've generally done, we followed the DPW backfill specifications, so we concrete the trench and we're responsible for that trench, so if that trench, no matter how long, like it's like a manhole that we have in the city, if it's sinking and there's a problem, then we have to take care of it. So that trench, as far as I'm, as far as I'm concerned, we own that trench until we repave the street at some other, you know, in a future time. So it's always usually been a two-foot trench with a two-foot overlay on each side. Now, if we're out further into the street, like the council of course is saying, towards the middle, then yeah, we've, in the past, we've done it full from the middle to the curb, we've done that.
Right.
But a lot of it determined, is determined on the dig save. We don't really know what's in the ground right now, it could be gas, water, power, all these things there. Could be in the way, that could, you know, we're planning on going down the side, we don't truly know.
You know, until you have dig save, what goes right?
Council Lozey, yes, you say that Verizon owns the trench in perpetuity, can you do us a favor and survey the city and let us know where all these Verizon trenches are and take care of?
Well, you listen to me, I'm Comcast.
Oh, Comcast, I'm sorry.
So you, you would be, we don't have as many trenches as Verizon and Power and those guys.
You may not, but we can start with you, could you provide us with the list of all of your trenches and allow us to view the previous work you've done in the past and let's take a look?
I mean, I think you can look back not too far at all the times that I've been up here within the last couple of years, there's a lot of work that we've done that is already at your fingertips that you can look at right now. And I'm, you know, I'm Comcast and I've loaded up our trenches against any.
With all due respect, what we find as board counselors, President, that the problem isn't last year's work or the year before even, it's three years ago, five years ago. Inevitably, they settled and the roads of Lynn, like many other communities, they're in tough condition and we're struggling as elected officials trying to maintain our roadway, so we really want to hold Comcast and other utilities to a very high standard. So we would like you, if you could, if you have that ability, to let us know what you've done in the past, that you just, correct me if I'm wrong, said that Comcast is willing to back up if they sunk or settled, that they'll go out and fix those trenches. So we need to know where they are and whose is whose, because when you drive down a street and there are trenches like a puzzle, we don't know who's Comcast, who's Verizon, who's National Grid and who's who. So if you can provide that to us, that would be helpful and we'll call you out on that and ask you to, if there are some sunken trenches, we'd like Comcast to fix them.
Absolutely. Good, so I don't know what kind of an undertaking that would be for us, I mean, they'd probably have to go to our design department to find out where, where we have underground.
Look at the list of all your old, your cuts and, yeah, if you could do that, that would be very helpful. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Council Seah.
Another thing, that's not the only way to get to these places, we don't have holes, so we have the trench, so if we want to bring the service to these folks that are asking for it, we have the trench, there's no other way to do it. Council Seah.
Mr. President, if I could follow up. No, and I don't think we're disputing that and we understand that and we appreciate our residents being able to have a choice in what service they, they choose and the services Comcast provides, but we still want, we recognize there's a problem and I don't know if you do, but we certainly recognize there's a problem in our city and other communities and we're concerned mainly with our community and we want full view and other utilities with very high standard and that's what we're attempting to do here.
I understand that and, you know, a lot of that, a lot of those holes that you're finding, those aren't trenches, those are just, you know, frosties and block damage and things like that, so I'm sure there's a contribution to trenching, we've got the trench to get to these spots, but we do adhere to the backfill requirements that the city of Lynn puts on us, so we're doing our part, if there is damaged trenches out there, we'll respond to that.
The only problem is that adhering to the DPW policy, which is a good policy, has its shortcomings and that is that they can't possibly chase after every utility three, four, five, six years after that trench has been placed and, and I know, as my colleagues know, we overwhelm our DPW at work and we'd rather put that burden on you and other utilities to ensure that everybody, all of the stakeholders are working together and that we can do a better job as elected officials for the residents in Lynn. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. At least Council Seah, the floor, and then Council Trahan.
Okay, I actually have a question from the board that the DPW has their stipulations, as gentlemen have just stated, that they adhere to and all that, I can appreciate that, but when the council puts a stipulation on a rule such as this trench, what why does that stipulation hold?
The council is free to add additional stipulations over the Department of Public Works regulations. I can state that our office is in negotiation with renewal with Comcast for a cable license. I've been in contact with Jay Lyman at Comcast, their statement to me is that from a business perspective, they will just choose not to comply with, or just choose not to go ahead with the project, it doesn't make financial sense, so that is the, what Comcast has expressed me as the business decision they have to make, it would cost more money to go curb to curb or center line to curb, and the profits they would make also would form by Comcast or in many cases, it's a business, a Lynn business that's looking for an upgrade to their computer systems and the end result would be that the business wouldn't get the upgrade, at least through Comcast or Verizon, Verizon would make a different business decision, I don't know, but the council would be free to put in additional stipulations if they assume that, but with a possible consequence.
So you're talking the widest the trench is going to be is twenty-four inches.
Right.
All right, so you understand the street that we're talking about is probably at least five feet wide.
Right.
So after you've placed twenty feet of the street in order for a two-foot trench, how far beyond the trench are you, because the DPW says, all right, because the problem is, as Council Lozey said, we're worried about our streets and we just did a survey on our streets in the city of Lynn, just for a bit of information for the entire council, it's thirty-five, thirty-nine million dollars worth of damages onto our streets. This year, we're only able to do about two and a half million dollars to do repairs, thirty-nine million dollars, and whether you agree with this or don't, because I heard your explanation, man, I know about trenches, trenches do contribute a lot in the city to that, whether it be Comcast, Verizon, National Grid, or whoever it is that's digging the trench, so it might be, the house are a little bit more comfortable. If you go four feet beyond the trench, because what that does is it creates an overlay compact of the street already and you're willing to go with a six inches of compact, and I do have experience with roadwork, I've done roads over the years, I've actually put a couple of roads into some of my hallways, so I do have some experience with that and I do know of road repair. If you go back to, you know, you're one foot beyond the trench that most companies do, you're going two feet on both sides.
That's usually what the DPW puts on the end.
It's our stipulation. I'll give you a perfect example, drive down Lewis Street, you'll see, they have a brand new street down there, somebody put a trench in there and what that trench looks like and they went two feet on both sides of the trench they put in, so that's what my concern is.
I believe, I understand what you're saying, but like the gentleman said before me, you can completely, you know, put whatever stipulations you want on whatever, whatever it is that stipulations you want on, whatever, whatever it is that you feel like you want to do. And when we go and pull the permit and we look at those, uh, specifications, then we'll have to look at the job and see if it, if it still makes sense. For instance, the Buffham Street job that may be coming up here, um, at the, the original price was, say, around ten thousand dollars, and they worked out some kind of deal with that customer. To go the one hundred and thirty feet, if you want to go above five foot each on both sides, now you've changed that into a, a massive street job. You would know that because there are other manholes that are on that street that now we are going to have to either get raised, work with those utility companies, say if there's a sewer thing that's falling in or what happened. You've changed the job from a cable installation to a street repaving project. That added eighteen thousand dollars to that job. So that job's not going to happen, you know? It just doesn't make the business sense.
How many, how many people that this job we're talking about right now?
State Street?
How many people is that going to affect?
Only one or two.
Five?
It's only a couple, I'm not sure. But the count, it's a different product. This is actually our Metro V product, uh, which is a fiber cable that's going into that building. But the Buffham Street, I believe, is just one unit.
Counselor Chakutus.
Thank you. Um, I think we need to, you know, we're kind of, I don't know, I think we need to talk to the DPW. I think, like, they have rules for them, and they adhere to them, they do it their cost approach by those regulations that they have, they adhere to. And now, man, I'm not saying it's a bad thing what Council on Rules is doing, it's actually a great thing, fixing a lot of our streets. But it gets to the point where you're going to take competition away now because now, like you just said, they're going to walk, they're not going to do these projects for people. So now people are going to be with Verizon or whatever, and you're taking away people's, you know, keeping the prices tight, you know, being competitive. So you, we got to kind of put our heads together as councilors and decide, you know, you're going to go this curb to curb thing, and we're going to have no, no development or any more improvements with our cable, and it's going to affect businesses, and now businesses, you know, not that they're going to leave, leave the city, but I mean, you know, they, they want fast access, they want their internet, they want their computers to work quickly. So, I mean, I think we have to kind of put our heads together and decide what the rules are going to be, and, uh, just let DPW do what they've been doing, and just hold their feet to the fire, as Council Lozey said, just make sure their trenches stay well for, you know, the five, six, seven years left. Make sure they keep checking, just start keeping a record of that, whatever. But I, I don't think that we can just make them do for a degree, I just don't think that's, I mean, as a businessman, that just wouldn't make sense to, to, to take care of a couple of people, you know? So I just think that we need to kind of think about the other aspects of this, taking as, you know, people's ability to have competition with Verizon and stuff. Thank you, Mr. President.
If there's no, if there's no objection to me, just to put my two cents in, it sounds though, uh, Counsel Seer, this is a perfect example of, of another project for your committee to work with the DPW to look at what other cities and towns do, uh, in regards to street openings, and maybe it's time to upgrade, uh, the DPW, I think, manual that I don't think has been maybe really looked at for some time. Counselor Trump, or Counselors?
I would, no, are we talking about other cities and towns? Or, 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 you find it...
Um, yeah, I was going to say, a lot of, a lot of the times, we just have to fill the trench in. Like, they were asking us to grind an overlay on, on each side of the trench.
So they have to, you know, like, the bigger communities?
Um, well, if you're preparing at the Boston, it's completely different. They do all of the, the trench repairs after we pay them, significant cost of money. Yeah, so it depends on what city you're in, and what town. Sometimes we just have to do the trench, and, you know, seam it and imperate and all that, and then, and then we go a little bit...
A little bit, you know, a rest of all of your conversations, DPW?
Not a lot, if we follow one of your regular, um, you know, DPW specifications, but when you do start talking curb to curb, it gets, it just works.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Lozey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say, aside from the debate on how to address, uh, whether it's curb to curb, aside from that, I still would like to see Comcast research your records for the last five, seven years, and let us know what your list is, and then we could, uh, disseminate that information amongst the Ward Councilors to review, and, you know, that would, I think that would be helpful in that area.
Yeah, I, I think I go back in this city, at least five, I think, I think we're all coming here, at least five years. So I have that fairly redable, and I can send that to, to Jan.
Thank you. Counsel Chakutus.
I have a motion to approve, and we're going to work with the councils on the DPW, and hopefully we can get this situation under control back.
I'll second that. Motion to approve. Second. Second, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call.
Council Biden.
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakutus.
Yes.
Yes, Council Kaluchi.
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer.
No.
No, Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Net.
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan.
Yes.
Ten yes. And the next petition is, um, grant location petition to place a new underground conduit to provide service to nine Buffham Street.
Counsel Chakutus. Motion made to approve. Counsel Chakutus.
I have a motion to approve.
Motion seconded.
And again, work with the DPW and...
Motion made to approve, seconded. Discussion, seeing none, roll call.
Council Biden.
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakutus.
Yes.
Yes, Council Kaluchi.
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Council Seer.
No.
No, Council Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Council Net.
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, ten yes.
Okay, what's next? We have...
The, uh, Orders and Rules Committee.
Counsel Creighton. It was a unit, it's one of the committee motion to approve, she made a motion seconded on this paper, saying I oppose, no, I have it.
And Ways and Means Committee, we have several finance orders.
We'll read them all together, and then we'll need emergency and all of the...
Okay, do you want me to include that other one, that, uh, energy saving in the beginning?
Yes.
Okay, so. Um... Order slash resolve that the Lin City Council hereby authorizes the execution and delivery of an equipment lease purchase agreement with respect to the acquisition, purchase financing, and leasing of certain equipment for the public benefit, and authorizes the execution and delivery of documents required in connection therewith, and authorizes the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transaction contemplated by this order slash resolution. Said lease purchase agreement shall be executed by, between the City of Lin and Bank of America Public Capital Corporation, while one of its affiliates shall not exceed three million nine hundred fifty-one thousand nine hundred thirty-eight dollars. Order that the City Control take the following actions: transfer the sum of fourteen hundred dollars and zero cents from the reserve account in nine hundred and zero, nine hundred dollars and zero cents to the emergency management expense account to the emergency management OT account; transfer the sum of twenty thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and zero cents from the insurance losses twenty K aggravated to the Lin Police Department expense vehicles account; certify as an available fund the amount to two hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars and zero cents, as allotted to the City of Lin Department of Public Works by the Department of Transportation for the Winter Rapid Recovery Road Program; certify as an available fund the amount to three thousand five hundred dollars and zero cents, as allotted to the City of Lin Health Department by the Department of Public Health to fund a grant amount for the fiscal year fifteen tobacco grant; certify as an available fund the amount to sixty thousand dollars and zero cents, as allotted to the City of Lin Health Department by Health Resources in Action, in partnership with the Department of Public Health to fund the Massive Motion Program Grant; certify as an available fund the amount to twenty-five thousand four hundred dollars and zero cents, as allotted to the City of Lin Community Development by the Department of Conservation and Recreation, to fund a grant initiative to plant trees in compliance with the DCI Urban and Community Forest Reprogram; certify as an available fund the amount to one hundred fourteen thousand seven hundred fifty-nine dollars and zero cents, as allotted to the City of Lin Health Department by the Executive Office of Health and Human Services, to fund a grant initiative for the fiscal year fifteen Save and Successful Youth Initiative; certify as an available fund the amount to seventy-five thousand dollars and zero cents, as allotted to the City of Lin School Department by the United Way of Massachusetts Bay and Merrimack Valley to fund Realizing Integrational Success Through Education Rise Grant; certify